And. Nope, we don't quite have a quorum. As soon as Rick comes in, we'll have it. Ashley. Marty. All right, there's Jimmy out. Hey Jimmy.
Hi, Mr. Hammer. How are you?
Just fine. Okay, I'm waiting on Rick to to get in. He's going in through his computer. He's having technical difficulties and we'll have our forum. Me, Jimmy, Marty, and Rick. We four.
Jimmy, I love I love the office. It's like your in the late March when they hadn't got themselves set up yet.
What are you talking about? My cubicle.
Yeah. Let's see. There's Rick Judge. Uh, that's uh, go ahead and see if you can unmute yourself, Rick. Okay, and uh, look, are you there, Rick?
I'm right here.
All right. Hey, Rick. All right. So we got a quorum now.
It was not easy, though.
That happens. We figure we're gonna have some technical difficulties and go ahead and get started in the interest of time. Welcome to the Dewey Beach Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for June 5th. We will do our opening ceremonies and do a a pledge of allegiance first. So I'll go ahead and start that of just uh, just just all just follow me. And I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Put it on your heart. Okay, on your heart.
And to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Think I got that right. All right. I'd like to take a moment of silence for our former mayor TJ Rutherford. The last meeting we were at, he attended and missed dearly. And just take a moment, please.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. TJ be missed and he's a great man. So moving forward on that, we're gonna go ahead and take a roll call. So so. Mike Hammer, I'm here. I'll just go down the list. Jim Bellicki, are you here? I don't see Jim yet. He was questionable. Rick Judge, are you you here?
I am here.
David Jazinski is not a member, so scratch him. He's now a town commissioner. Thank you, David, for volunteering for a thankless job. Mark Mark Norquist, are you here yet? No. Okay. Jimmy O'Connors, you here?
I'm here.
All right. And Marty Marty Sights, you're here?
Yes, I'm here.
We have a quorum. So that's the opening ceremonies. I'd like to adopt the agenda that was shown, that was posted that on the website properly. So who would like to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the agenda.
All right. All in favor? Aye, aye. Any nays? Here none? Okay, Marty was gracious enough to produce meeting minutes from the last meeting. And I'm looking for a motion to adopt the minutes. We can talk about any changes after we get a motion on the table. So a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes from the last meeting.
Thank Jimmy. Second? Looking for a second?
I'll second.
All right, discussion. I see one error, possible error. It was a item, the second item one, first page, it says Commissioner David Jazinski and Mark Bellicki. I think it was um, it was either Mark Nordquist would develop recommendations for the draft ordinance on the driveway issue. So I think it was Mark that was gonna work with David, not not. Mr. Bellicki. So that's the one. Okay, so Marty, just change that.
Did David Jazinski scratch that, right?
No, so it'd be David and Mark were gonna work on that. So all you need to do is just scratch. The name Bellicki and put in Nordquist, Mark Nordquist instead of Mark Bellicki. Make it Mark.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Okay, got it.
That's the only change I see. Anybody else have any comments? All right, hearing none. A good vote to approve the minutes as a friendly amendment was made by me. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? See none? Passes unanimously. And that takes care of the minutes. And item one is a discussion of planning zoning commission and Remington Vernick engineers about the FARs setbacks and related code issues. For planning and zoning that we're researching and considering for code changes. So this is a really discussion. Go ahead, Garrett.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Is the lot, the video YouTube screen working? I don't, I can't link to it. I was just testing it.
I think what's happening is people are just getting thrown into this meeting, I think, is what Ashley was saying. Ashley, you got any comments on that?
There was a YouTube link which doesn't seem to work.
This is Dave. I just tested it and the meeting, the the link is working, but you have to refresh your YouTube page to see it. Okay? I mean, I just tested it and the meeting's definitely up.
Right, got it now. Sorry to interrupt, Mike.
That's all right. No, no, no problem. So uh, the basically the item one, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but basically it's just today's just a discussion amongst the planning zoning Remington Vernick and the town to review research to date and findings. We're gonna do a public hearing, probably a couple of public hearings. And we we said possibly workshop. We've already done one workshop, so we probably won't do the workshop, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna limit. Our transparency and communications and meetings to anything at this point. What I'd like anyone listening or concerned about going forward is we're going to, we're gonna do have have several discussions on this. There's gonna be no rush to get it done. We're gonna get it done, but I wanna make sure that no one feels that they've been slighted or rushed or whatever. So I'm gonna do my best to do that and do it transparently by posting things publicly and assuring that we do the best, especially in this this technology situation we got going on. You know, so we won't make any final decisions today. And I anticipate by next summer, we have a proposal for the town commissioners. But you know, if it goes longer than that, it goes longer than that. Or if it gets done shorter than that, it gets done shorter than that. We have a lot of items that we have been assigned by the commissioners to get done, town commissioners to get done. And I wanna make sure the town commissioners know that we're going to get those done. We had one of those items scheduled in April and we had to cancel that due to COVID-19. And that was the closing times. So we'll get that done. There's the driveways issues that we need to get done. We need the stormwater runoff, best practices done, and the neglected homes ordinance done. We do have a draft neglected homes ordinance. All we need to do is put it into a meeting and get it done. But what we figured today is we wanted to get this Remington and Vernick presentation done with Chris Fazio and his engineer Ashton Jones is waiting to pull up the PowerPoint. And they'll go through the PowerPoint and then we'll have a big discussion about it. But remember, we still have an item two. Item two is gonna be all about driveway issues and some of those other things, quick discussion. And we can, you know, put that on agendas as we go forward and and try to get knock some of these off as the summer and the fall and the winter, you know, comes upon us. During, on the PowerPoint, Chris, if you could pull up the the PowerPoint front page, I'm just gonna give you a little preface of what people can expect while you're pulling it up. So don't, don't worry about rushing to pull it up. Just give us on the first page. So what you're gonna see, you're gonna see that. We're gonna review the floor area ratios, the FAR, we're gonna, all the things we said we're gonna do, we're gonna do. We're gonna talk about the regulating building sizes. We're gonna look at FARs and neighboring towns. We're gonna look at some pictures. A picture says a thousand words. We might even bring more pictures. If folks want more pictures of, you know, what this might look like or what that might look like. You know, it basically comes down to what do you want the town of Dewey Beach to look like? And that's what we're doing right here. We're starting that journey. And it's a journey of public input. It's a journey of understanding that there's differing opinions. And we're gonna come to some type of recommendation for the town commissioners to decide whether or not that's what they wanna go with. I guess if they don't like what we bring to them, they'll send us back to the back to the shop to work, work on it some more. There's gonna be some setback discussion, building height and lot coverage on corner lots. So without any further ado, if Chris and Ashton are ready, or well, first of all, is there any questions from the planning zoning commissioners or comments or anyone before we get started? That is hearing none. So Chris and Ashton, you are the star of the show.
Mike, maybe I had a question here. I know. Is doing this. Is it, we're talking about items one to three that we had assigned last meeting? I mean.
Yeah, yes. No, right now we are not. We are talking about item one on the agenda and that's the planning and zoning. Discussion with Remington and Vernick in the town about the the recommendations from Remington and Vernick. The other items, the the driveway, stormwater runoff and neglected homes, we're really not gonna talk about all of those today. We're only, item two, we're only gonna talk about the status of the driveway issues and the research. And about the stormwater. Oh, actually, we are gonna talk about the three. We're gonna talk about the stormwater runoff, the driveways and the. The abandoned homes and where we're gonna go with that. We're gonna, we're gonna put some clear direction on what we're doing with that. That's all about a five minute discussion.
All right. Okay, good. But we're not gonna, for example, David and Mark are not gonna talk about an ordinance, a possible ordinance, for example.
No, no, I don't think we're gonna talk. We're not gonna like list the ordinance or anything because we didn't post it as a public hearing or anything like that. What we do. Okay. So. We do wanna state that you might have heard earlier that David Jazinski is now a town commissioner, so he can't be a planning zoning commissioner. But thank you, David. And there's a recommendation that will be in the town commissioners meeting. Yes, it's next week or whenever they have their next meeting. So we'll see how that goes. And I guess without any further discussion or anybody have any comments, Rick, you need to say anything or are we good to go with Chris?
No, let's let's watch the PowerPoint and go from there.
All right. You're up. You're up there, Remington Vernick.
Thank you, Mr. Hammer. So it's good to see everybody again. Ashton Jones, you know, one of my associates, he's a certified planner. He's with us this evening. He's he's gonna lead the presentation, lead the discussion and, you know, we'll get through this and happy to engage in the dialogue. So we'll we'll get started here.
All right. Thank you, Chris. I guess since we never really talked about it, I think from my opinion, the way we should do this is I'll probably run through the whole PowerPoint. And then can start discussing whatever individual items. I think that'll be easier doing each item as we go through. So hopefully you're all in agreement.
That works.
So yeah, so the first item on the agenda here is the FAR. After analyzing both Dewey Beach, Rehoboth Beach, Luce, Bethany Beach, Fenwick Island. We sort of came to some conclusions. What we decided, and it's important to note that in all of these, these are sort of a menu of options. They're not. Do one without the other or multiple depending on what we're talking about. So that's important to note as well. So the first thing is we think simplify the definition of FAR and just really make it something very simple and purely to what it is, is generally speaking gross floor area. All the buildings divided by the lot size or the lot area. So that is the first thing. Right now, you sort of say FAR and then in your FAR, you also include exclusion and exclude inclusions and exclusions. We'll get to that in a second. But so we think you should break those out, make FAR simple, and then also change your gross floor area definition. And in your gross floor area is where you wanna talk about all the inclusions and exclusions. So there's a sort of just simplistic answers. Then the, I think the real important thing is what are the inclusions and exclusions? So we threw some out there. You know, you have garages, you have. Covered, uncovered, enclosed, decks covered, uncovered, enclosed, roof decks in your scenario, attics, basements, terraces, breezeways. Exterior stairs, if they're covered or not covered. So these are things to consider that we think would be worth. The discussion of do they, are they in or out? Do we wanna give people the additional area or not? So that's sort of the floor area questions that we're gonna discuss later when we're done this presentation. Chris, next slide. We also looked at sort of how might you regulate building size. There's various ways you could do this. One way that some towns, surrounding towns do, that Dewey Beach does not, is give a maximum size for a residential building. We came up with a suggestion of thirty-five hundred to four thousand square feet. While on face value, that might sound large to some compared to other municipalities, it's not. Some go as high as seven thousand five hundred square feet as their max building size. So adding a building size would be an option to regulate. That also you could, if you're gonna add a building size, there should be a debate on. To keep an FAR. We do think that. For setback standards and various lot standards and a maximum building size, you could potentially achieve the same thing. Also, another thought is if you do keep an FAR, you could reduce the FAR. Right now Dewey Beach's FAR is substantially larger than surrounding communities. And then also you could do a combination if you, again, if you did wanna keep FAR, you could combine both FAR with a max. Maximum floor area for residential structures. Next slide, Chris. Here's some pictures of buildings that both existing and under construction to just sort of give a a context to this conversation. So the first one. Is a five thousand square foot lot and it's a, we'll just say a three thousand square foot building. Chris, next slide. It's also a bayside location. This next one is a seventy-five hundred square foot lot with a thirty-eight hundred square foot building, so almost four thousand square feet, also on a bayside location. The next slide. Here is a five thousand square foot lot with a nearly five thousand square foot building on the ocean side location. Next slide. So as we discuss setbacks. We, so, so we talk about height limitations and building size and setback standards. Due to this, we don't think that. You necessarily need to have tiered setbacks. That's something that you currently have in your ordinance. What that means is depending on the height of the stories, the ordinance requires you to step back. We feel like considering that you only have basically two and a half story and three story limits. That maybe this isn't something that's necessary, and it just adds another layer of confusion. We do think that possibly. This could be addressed by looking at building setbacks. You could alter the setbacks to sort of achieve that same. Second and third story setback that you might require now. If you did want to have tiered setbacks, we recommend that you might consider these. On corner lots. And specifically, if you did wanna keep them, we think it might be more appropriate in the RR zone where you have a three story bay versus. The NR zone where you have that two and a half story limitation. The setbacks are for Dewey Beach are currently fully within the range of surrounding communities. So they're not, they're not extremely small or extremely large. Next slide. Here you can see a summary of the setbacks of Dewey Beach compared to other municipalities. And you can see like. We're within the range of everything else. There's nothing really abnormal. Next slide. So next, we're gonna talk about building height. Specifically, this conversation is relating to the special flood hazard area. And Dewey Beach currently has some standards that differentiate between zones and the flood hazard area. And specifically have different height limits when you're in the flood hazard area, as might the underlying zone have. We think it might just be more simple or easier to sort of. Set a height as your zoning ordinance might already dictate and then set your. Height that you're allowed when you're in your flood hazard area, be it. Freeboard, be it base flood elevation, be it whatever it is, just don't differentiate differentiate between different zones and have different standards. Just say you have a freeboard. And we're allowing you to go the height limit of that freeboard. Just for the public who doesn't know. The freeboard is, so there's, there's a special flood hazard area and then there's a base flood elevation, which is. In essence, the height of the one hundred or one percent chance flood. That is determined by FEMA, so it's a federal standard. And that basically says, okay, ground might be zero. But you might have a base flood elevation of five feet, which means that water would come up five feet in the event of a one hundred or one percent year flood. And then freeboard is an additional standard above that. Many towns might just say that your freeboard is the base flood elevation. Then standard towns might have an additional freeboard requirement, say one foot or two feet above that. To bring it all back together, just not to confuse you, what we're saying is you take your freeboard and you add whatever the district's height requirement is in that standard. I should add that that will definitely obviously create higher buildings and could in the short term. Create some pretty extreme differences between neighbors when you have an older house and a new construction. But ultimately, over time, that is the standard we're going. Also, federal flood insurance policies are ultimately gonna raise all those structures and those that don't get raised will have very high flood premium, flood insurance premium. Next slide. Here you can see sort of a standard and you can see specifically in Beach under the NR and RR zones. The height is different when you're in a flood hazard district, sorry, area than the underlying zoning. And so you can see that differentiation. And so what I'm saying is just make them the same as you in Bethany Beach, the height is the same, Fenwick Island, the height is the same, and South Bethany, the height is the same. Our next slide. So as it relates to lot coverage. We don't recommend that you need to change any lot coverage sizes. What this is really speaking about is many towns, in addition to bulk and setback standards, will also limit. Impervious coverage. Dewey Beach already limits impervious coverage outside of the building buildable area. And the buildable area is that area within all of your setback standards. Dewey Beach already prohibits that. Also, in just a quick calculation of a five thousand square foot lot, your current buildable area is approximately forty-seven percent of that lot. So if you look at then, yeah, sorry. So next slide. So we don't show it, but just for comparison. Rehoboth, sorry, Bethany Beach has a forty percent maximum building building coverage. Luce has a fifty percent. So you're. You're, you're within the standard realm of surrounding municipalities. And then some like South Bethany does not even indicate a building coverage limit such as Dewey Beach. As we get to corner lots. You're with me as I go through my notes. So when we get to corner lots, there is some standard and and I could be off, but when I read your code. I did not see a clear way of defining this, but the difference is in the lots, in the lot setback requirements, there's lot setbacks from a front yard and a side yard, a side yard adjacent to a street. I did not see really a way of quantifying what would happen if you were a corner lot on, say, two side streets. The code does define a primary street and it does define a non-primary street, but when you're on two pri, two non-primary streets. The code, at least in my review, did not seem to distinguish what became a side yard and a front yard. So does a lot have two side yards in that, two side yards abutting of street in that scenario? I didn't come to the standard. But I think you should clarify that. What is the frontage when you have two, a corner lot on two side streets? But aside from that, we do feel that your frontage standards and your corner lot standards are adequate as they stand. And that, next slide, I think that's it. Oh, right. So here's just a. These are some schematics that we did that relate to just a typical corner lot and you can see sort of how Dewey Beach's corner, Dewey Beach's corner lot might relate to Rehoboth. Can totally read Bethany Beach. And I don't know what the third one is there. Is that Luce? Can't tell, Chris.
Yeah, it's, it's you've got Rehoboth, Luce, and you've got Bethany Beach.
Right, exactly. So Rehoboth, Luce, and Bethany, just to show you comparison. Next slide. That should be it. Yeah. All right. So what we do, so that concludes my side. I'm totally, obviously, we're gonna have a discussion and debate this in more detail. And I will definitely be taking notes on getting all of your feedback and comments, but I sort of opened the floor to you all.
What we'll do is Mike Hammer, let's go, let's let the commission, the the planning zoning commissioners go through their comments first. And then we'll open it up to everyone else. So. Why don't we start with me? And I really don't have any comments because you got all my comments from when we reviewed this earlier in the week. Jim Bellicki is not here. So Rick Judge, why don't you go next? What are your comments?
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Ashton. Thanks, Chris. I think we need to first, on the the FAR issue, determine what's included. And if we can make that simple, we have no way of knowing how big or small a FAR should be or how big or small this square footage should be until we know what's included in that number. And if we can designate all covered, all enclosed, whatever, then we have a basis to determine a one FAR, a point eight five FAR, thirty-eight hundred square foot home. You can have a very nice thirty-eight hundred square foot home with another two thousand square feet of deck around it. And then you've got a five thousand square foot home. So there's, there's, we need to. Simplify and state what's included in the square footage or the FAR. I was a little confused with the the flood hazard areas. I was under the assumption that our building height is thirty-five feet from the crown of the road. Regardless of where your front floor elevation is. And I think that's important because if someone is below flood. And then they can go up ten feet to start their first floor and go thirty-five feet from there, they're ten feet above their neighbors. And I don't think that's appropriate, but maybe I misunderstood where you were going with that. The tiered setbacks, fine. I don't think we really need to require that in in our residential areas. With the exception of considering it to be a benefit for perhaps the corner lots where they could have a regular footprint of a first floor. And do not be a towering effect over the roads they abut or a safety feature for 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 traffic. That they be tiered back on second floor and third floor and avoid the townhouse looking single family home and give that property owner a little bit better use of his property. And. I probably had some other notes, but that's, that's my first comments.
All right. So Rick, we'll take those notes, decipher them. And I don't know if you have any comments on those, Ashton, but the. The height issue is is a little bit more complex and Jim Deeds might be able to address the two differences where the thirty-two and the thirty-five comes from. If I recall correctly, I think we kept a a single freeboard of one and a half feet across, across, across the board, no pun intended. And but. How do you, how do you wanna handle this? Ashton, do you have any comments to anything but?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I, my impression is that actually your standard is directly trying to address. Jim's issues with, I think it was Jim. I don't have my entire screen. Was it Jim went first, correct?
What's that? No, Rick did.
You know, sorry, Rick. So I think to address Rick's question, I think your standard right now, as as I read it, with your special flood hazard area. It is designed to almost do exactly what you had indicated is your preference. So I think what it's saying is that. Thirty-eight, you might be allowed a thirty-five foot height in the flood hazard district. We're only gonna give you thirty-two because you're already. Above that thirty-five, right? So whatever base flood is, we're only gonna give you thirty-two as opposed to the thirty-five so that you're not towering over everything. So I think that was the attempt. Of course, I'm willing to say if I interpreted it wrong or differently than you, then that's, of course, another consideration. I do think. It's, it's important to note that. At least in my opinion, yes, there would be a difference, be obviously of three feet in this scenario, but to me, that three feet. Didn't necessarily achieve, achieve such a great. Visual distinction. Visual distinction. So if, if the goal was to say, we don't want these buildings towering above. Well, not necessarily part of this conversation right now or coming to a conclusion right now. Then we might even say flood hazard district heights should be limited to, you know, I'm just going to make something up twenty feet. You know, because then you'll actually see a big distinction and I'm not suggesting that. But I just wanted to sort of reply at least. Sort of my thought process on where those statements were coming from.
Alright.
Well, what I was trying to do is if you, if you draw a string across rooftop to rooftop. And somewhere in the, in the flood dis- flood special flood area and some are not. That, that string should be leveled.
Well, you, that's what, that's what Dave King tried to do and that's why he said it thirty two because the thirty two. Plus, plus the free board is never going to be higher. So he leveled it out by making a thirty two and a special flood and thirty five and nine. So, and, 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 uh, Jim Deeds is on here and Jim, if I misstated, I, I gave a very general statement there. If you have any details, you can chime in, uh, if you want to chime in on that or if we got our.
Uh, just a simple correction. I think you mentioned one and a half of free board. It is one.
One, okay.
We do make a distinction in the flood zones. Uh, where the free board is, you can build one foot higher in the VE zone, which is basically oceanfront. Because of the way it's measured by FEMA. So we gave them an extra foot of height. In that area and the reason being is. All the other, other zones, uh, start your measurement from the. Top of your first, the, the first floor structure itself, where the floor is. In the VE zone, the measurement starts at the Joyce below the first floor, so that leaves a foot. So we compensated when we, we recommended this back in, I think, two thousand nine. But, uh, it's. It's basically. The, um, I, I don't think it's real. It hasn't been an issue for us yet. And, and the only reason I say yet is because we haven't had somebody who's got, uh. An existing thirty five or foot home based on, uh, the center point of the street. Who has now in a flood zone. And let's say he gets, uh, a complete destruction of his home. He would have to build at the thirty two foot height. Baseball elevation plus one. And we, we understood that when the planning commission met. And we said that the, you know, we don't get that many of it, and if it's a problem, they should take it to the Board of Adjustment.
Exactly. That's exactly the way it went down, Tim. I was right there with you. So, um, and thank you very much for that clarification.
And maybe just for the public's, uh. Education, I, so I'm also a certified floodplain manager with FEMA. I do have, I'm definitely not an expert, but I do have knowledge on this issue. I mean, I do think it's also important to note that. Especially after, you know, say, Superstorm Sandy. He was making a point to try and update these maps and make them as accurate as possible. And I think it's a fair assumption to say that as time goes on. The flood elevation is likely to rise. And so at some point also, and this is just a consideration when we're thinking these through. At some point, even the best laid plan will. You know, if we wanted all the rooftops to be even, at some point they're going to start to not be even again.
Thank you, Ashton.
Yeah, it's just something to consider.
Alright, uh, next on the, on the, uh, this would be Jimmy O'Connor. You got any comments?
Thank you all for doing this. I appreciate it. I agree with Rick that we need to figure out what's included in the FAR before we can move forward with that. And other than that, I really don't. Most of them were answered.
Alright, uh, Marty, what, what do you have?
No, I guess my reaction is with the definition of FAR, I mean, I, I believed. That we had a good definition of the FAR. In the, in the, um. In the, um. Rule and regulations, but maybe not, but maybe it needs to be made, made definitive. But I think it's pretty easy to say, go down that list and say, yes, yes, no, no, in terms of. Sort of historically what Dewey Beach has been doing, like for example, breezeways. Have never been, in my mind, have never been considered as part of the floor area, you know, in a construction project. So I think we could pretty quickly. Check yes and no to that list and, and come up with something that's consistent with historically what we've, how we've dealt with FAR. I mean, that's been in our code for, uh, well, ever since the beginning, I would imagine, eight, nineteen eighty one, so. I think that's just a question of. Of applying kind of what traditionally is part of the FAR. I think that's pretty straightforward. I would hope it is.
Alright, Marty, um, yeah, what, what were, uh, so any other comments?
No, that's, that's, that's what I have. No, thanks. Especially.
Just to feedback on Marty. We, we have different, um, regulations for FAR configurations in the RR zone and the NR zone. And even though basements aren't allowed in the RR zone, and they are in the RR zone. Garages are in both and one are included, one is not included. We need to. Make it consistent and. Just go through the. The, the different definitions of what is a porch, what is a garage, what is not habitable? And whatever we come up with, that's what we need to use so that we know what we're calculating. And until we know what we're calculating, the FAR or the square footage. Is, is not consistent.
That's Rick.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think, I know, I think that's a good exercise. But I think it, I think based on, on experience or based on, on traditional interpretation, I think that's a. Straightforward, but, uh. But you think the NR would be different than the RR and we'd have to define two different FAR definitions?
Should be the same.
Same, right. It should be the same. So. Um, no, I think that's, it's worth doing and, and, but it, uh, I think it. Nothing's, nothing's obvious, but I would say that this is almost obvious as to what the answer is, but. I might, might be mistaken. I look forward to seeing what you, what's, uh, what's suggested in that area.
No, we're just, we just need to make it black and white for all zones.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea.
And your square footage, this is what's included in the calculation of NFAR.
Yeah, good, good idea to go back to basics and, and, uh, look at that.
That's, that's going to be our goal for our next meeting is we, we will determine, we, like, we're just going to take these. We're not these issues off one by one is what I think is going to, the only way we're ever going to get through this. So what we're.
Got one more quick one.
Oh, yeah. Okay, go ahead, Rick.
What, uh, Remington, uh, came up with, which I think is very important. Under our current regulations, a one point oh FAR in the NR district. If someone were to own two lots, they could build a large ten thousand square foot home under current code. That I do not think would be, uh, compatible with their, the, the neighborhood. And if we had a square footage, uh, max, that would then be limited. They can build a home on two lots, but it couldn't be larger than the other homes.
Yep, okay. So that's, that'll, that'll be. I, I think what we'll do is we'll work on the table two FAR inclusions and exclusions. And, uh, the square footage issue, we'll work on that, uh, for the next meeting. That'll be like the topic of the next meeting, you know, it might not be a public hearing. Because we won't have an ordinance or a cha- or a change to the code yet. But it'll be another meeting like this, but we'll focus just on those issues and see if we can get a resolution as to how it will be. We'll work offline in between this meeting and that meeting to come into the meeting with something to recommend is what my goal will be. So, and then, and then once we're done that, then we'll, then we'll look at, um, you know, setbacks, uh. Height, um, and, uh, corner lots. So we have, we have a lot to do, but it's, but that, the first thing we got to do is. Get that correct, like you're suggesting. So we will move forward on that for, and, and the goal will be to have a, uh. Complete discussion on this issue for the next, the next meeting.
Mike, can I add something of consideration?
Yep, we're, uh, now we're, we're going to, uh, add town, we'll get, uh, town representation and we'll get the, uh, see if anybody from the public wants to talk. So go ahead, go ahead, Jim.
One thing we wrestle with it, it, when we look at the FAR. And we look at what's the ground floor versus the first floor and the second floor. And we have historically said that if you've got heated. If you've got HVAC attached to the ground floor, that becomes your first floor. And we've had homes that have storage areas. But, you know, could easily be converted down the road, uh. But, uh, and they, the homes that are done in such a fashion. Consider that as a ground floor and, and we've gone along with it because we're not a hundred percent sure what's the right way. So therefore you can have, go to the second floor, which would be the first floor, down floor, first floor and second floor. And you can bypass the, uh, half story. So it's an area that, uh, we're not a hundred percent sure of which way to go. Uh, we've only had a couple of cases where we've had to deal with it, but. That might be something we ought to just talk about, at least a consideration to look at that. When do you consider the ground floor, the first floor versus? A ground floor and don't include it into the story level? Does that make sense?
I think, Jim, what you're saying is that if they, if it's air conditioned and heated. It's part of the floor area.
Yes, we, anything that's heated directly is that's part of the floor area ratio. But the question is, is if you put HVAC. And let's say one room on the ground floor, we consider that to be the first story because that's livable space.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's a reasonable interpretation. I don't.
But I, I just want to make, make sure we're all on the same page on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think you put on, we put on the list. I mean, that's at least one discriminator. If it's, if it's heated or. Or air conditioned as a, as a living space. It's part of the floor area, maybe, maybe that's a good definition.
I, 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 yeah, just on that topic, this is Rick again. I think plumbing might be a, a better criteria to base on, on habitable or usable space. I have an elevator and I have a small elevator room and it's required to have, uh, uh, an HVAC system for the hydraulics.
We've never considered that, Rick.
Well, I'm just saying you can have. If you have a wine cellar in your, in your lower part of your house. But there's no plumbing. I don't know. I just think that the, uh, the criteria for HVAC might be. Not the best.
Not be as clear as I think it, might not be as clear as I think it is. Well, that's interesting.
Well, that's why I bring it up. It's a, maybe that's something you all should talk about. Put it on, put it on your radar.
It, it's noted and, um, you know, that'll, it might take two meetings to get, just get this discussion done. This is like, this is like the heart of what we've been assigned. So we will definitely, uh, be working on the details of this. The, and start with the exclusions and inclusions. So thank you, Jim, uh, Rick and Marty. Any other discussion on that with the, uh, P and Z commissioners or, uh, town hall? And if not, we got anybody else wants to weigh in? Gary, uh, not sure who else we have.
Dave, like to weigh in if possible.
Yeah, Dave, uh, there you go. Yep.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just going to say, Jim, I, I appreciate bringing up the ground floor. I think that that's, uh, extremely wise. Uh, in terms of having a crisp definition around it, whatever the definition is. On the, uh, special flood hazard area, the, the thing that sticks in my mind from those hearings, which I wasn't involved, as some of you were, is. People were very concerned about their ability to rebuild after an event. And like after a major event, if the, uh, base flood elevation was raised from, let's say, being. You know, two feet or three feet above grade to something where it's, you know, six or eight feet above grade, right? And, um, you know, I just remembered that that was a very vocal concern. So you guys kind of want to take that. Into account just because I just remember the public was so concerned about it, especially in the case of condos. Where someone's got a first floor unit or top floor unit and. What becomes illegal if you have to raise the whole building, right? Where you've got a unit on the first, second and third floor. Um, and then the only other thing is before you guys are done with the discussion. I'd just like to understand as a commissioner, Mike, kind of your idea of the process you're going to go through to draft. The initial legislation and whatnot in terms of like meeting sequence or whatnot. That was it.
Yeah, so, so the plan, yeah, I, I, I've, I've been thinking hard about that and. You know, uh, I think the first thing we need to do is get some of the skeleton pieces together. And the way we'll do that is we'll use table two, uh, which has the inclusions and exclusions to guide us. And once we get, you know, uh, as best consensus as possible through the public process, it might take us all summer to get that. Of inclusions, exclusions, uh, do we, uh, do we maximize, you know, do we say there's a maximum square footage? The issues we just talked about, I have my notes here, but we will work, uh, I will probably work, you know, have, have Rick, if he's willing. You know, work offline maybe with Jim Deeds, uh, you know, to find out exactly what they're doing in town hall and these things, how they're interpreting. And then maybe just do a markup of table two and have the table two as a guiding for our discussion. In, in the future meetings for this summer. Because what we're going to have is we're going to have, we'll have like a, like an agenda that looks just like today. But the item one in the agenda would say, work on table two stuff, you know, inclusions, exclusions. And then we still have these other things. We're way behind on things the commissioners have assigned us. We got further behind because of this delay with COVID. But we still have to allow time to get the, the other things done. So, uh, going into the fall, if by some miracle we can have the inclusions, exclusions finalized. Get those items on table two as far as the maximum square footage. Do we want to lower the FAR or not? Uh, I think then we can begin to craft, uh, what that ordinance, uh, may look like over the winter. Come, come into the spring, people are, people are maybe back from, uh, their, um. You know, winter, spring, uh, flings, you know, when they go south or whatever, uh, you know, vacations. And when folks are back in town, so we don't exclude folks, they can't say, oh, we were out of town when you did all this. Then we'll start to have the, the public, uh, uh, what do you call it, public hearings. And, and we might not get through an ordinance in the first public hearing. It might, a couple of public hearings because. Because as we communicate this, you know, folks are going to begin to understand the, the, the huge significance of what we're basically embarking upon here. So that's the game plan. Uh, use, use table two as our guiding light and, um, you know, have Fred Townsend, who is here today. Guide us into legal aspects and help us draft, uh, whatever the final ordinance looks like. But I see it being some definitely table two and maybe some, some code language in an ordinance. That we deliver to the town commissioners with a recommendation. And the town commissioners are several, you know, town commissioners in this meeting today, which is great. You're seeing the beginning, uh, not really the beginning, we had a workshop last year. But the beginning of where we're going to put the rubber to the road and put, uh, begin to, uh, put the code. Proposal together in a public fashion, but it's going to take several discussions like this.
Mike? Can I make a comment?
Yeah, whoever, whoever it is.
Gary Persinger.
Yeah, Gary, okay.
Yeah, just, just a couple of comments. Um, this presentation was great. Uh, but you guys really have the hard work ahead of you. Uh, in making some decisions. You've got a lot of options to look at here. But you're going to have to make some hard decisions and, and I, you know, I think you're already aware of that. In, in making your decisions, uh, make sure that you, you think about. What the impact could be on the existing building structures that are in town already. And if you make a change and somebody wants to make some modifications, wants to rebuild. And I think, uh, there was this issue of increasing the number of non-conforming properties just by virtue of some of the changes that you might consider making. I think that was raised in the, um, in the document that RBU put together today. You have to think about future considerations, but also think about the impact on existing buildings as well.
Appreciate.
How the, how the town should, should, uh, handle, um, a potential increase in non-conforming properties.
Okay, that, that, uh, that's definitely something we're going to need to, uh. You know, take into consideration. It can have an impact for sure. Thank you, Gary. Anyone else want to comment before we move on to the second item? On the, close out the first item, I'm going to say that, uh. You know, me, at, at this point, uh, me, me, Rick and maybe Jim Deeds, if Jim Deeds is willing. Will try to, uh, put some type of, uh, red line to table two for the discussion. I'll make up an agenda item for, for, uh, our next meeting that will begin to tackle these hard, uh, items. Uh, and we'll start with, we'll start basically with inclusions and exclusions. You know, are porches and, and, and things like that included or not? And we'll come back in our next meeting, which, you know, I think can be in July sometime. And, uh, just have that discussion and we'll, and we'll have a meeting in August. Or, you know, you know, just try to keep regular meetings going forward to, uh, knock off. Issue by issue and build the table two to a point where we can turn it into that draft ordinance. We might even have to, you know, halfway through, Gary, Gary, you can watch over us. And if you decide that you'd like us to do a report to the town commissioners at some point, uh, in the fall, you know, where we're headed. You know, we'll do whatever, whatever we need to communicate this because we realize that we don't get as big an audience here. As we might get at a town commissioners meeting. So we might come in and just give a status report and, and, and just solicit input. Or we could deliver a written one, however you want to handle it in the fall.
Yeah, Mike, uh, it's Gary again. I, I think it's somehow we have to get more information out to the public.
Yeah.
I think I said this to you in an email today, you've got a real challenge of not only making the public aware. You know, getting their, their interest, uh, up to a certain extent, but then having some public input. Uh, because you really need that. The, the last thing you want to do is, you know, we'll get to the end of the, your process here. Come up with what you think are some good changes and then the public descends on you and, and, and the commissioners. Decide those aren't so good.
Decide those aren't so good, that somebody's oxen getting gored. So, you know, that, that's a real challenge and hopefully the town can help get more information out to people. You know, I noticed what's posted on the, the town website today is just the slide presentation. I think the full document should be out there as well, I think. You know, both of those should go hand in hand. I think they should both be available to the public.
You want the, so you're saying the, the PowerPoint and the memo that went to town hall, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I, I think both of those documents should be available. I mean, they really are public documents. It's just
Yeah.
get more available to the public.
We'll post, we're gonna post, I'll tell you what, we'll, we'll, we'll post all that for the next meeting so everybody can see it. Cause we definitely don't want there to be any lack of transparency. And maybe some email blasts as we get through, you know, going into the fall, we get some, get some decisions made at the P and Z level of where we think we're going and we'll get those posted. So, thank you. Any other comments from anyone? And we'll move to item two.
I'll just comment that I'm, I'm, I'm okay to work with Jim as a follow-up on table two, so.
Yep, awesome. Thank you, Rick. We'll call that an action item. Thank you. Chris Fazio, we're good with you guys. If you wanna, you wanna bug out or you have any comments, closing comments, or anything burning?
No, it's always a pleasure to see everybody, happy to help and look forward to assisting you with this next, next task you're taking on.
All right. Well, I'll be talking to you as we figure out what direction we're going and it'll be real.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Everybody.
All right. The next item is a discussion, discussion about three things. So it'll be quick. We're gonna talk about driveway issues, research and draft ordinance. And that was Dave Jazinski. He's not a commissioner anymore, but he did some work on that. So if he's, if he's able to report just quickly on that. And then we'll do the stormwater report about the resilient community partnership. Rick did a lot of work on that offline and he's gonna just give us a quick report there. And as far as the neglected homes, we've got a draft ordinance and all we can say on that is, you know, we just need to get it on the agenda. Maybe that's an easy one. We'll just, we'll just put that, maybe, maybe that's, that's what to do, Marty. We're gonna put that on the next agenda as item two. I'll write the agenda. But I need to make a note here because we can do a public hearing on that ordinance that's already pretty much drafted. It's not final until you go through the public process. But, you know, the neglected homes ordinance, that's knocked that off in the next meeting. So the next meeting, we'll talk about Rick's progress and neglected homes. So, next meeting. So for now, can we get a report from you, David Jazinski, on the driveways?
Yeah. So just, so you know, I, I copied you. I wasn't able to get with Mark. I don't know what might be going on, but I just wasn't able to get with him.
Okay.
But I have, I have my notes and kind of some thoughts. I, I can't, I can't be too explicit because I'm kinda like a commissioner now. So I'm supposed to kinda get input from you guys. But, you know, as you know, we talked about striping in the last meeting and that got started. And as you know, there was a lot of negative feedback, you know, primarily from people who have tougher issues, for lack of a better word, that they're dealing with, whether it's what they may have done or the configuration of their lot or the street. There's also the issue, if we do additional striping, right now, we're in a really tough budget year. And, you know, that's additional expense. So in the, in the very short term, I think it's, it would be something that would be hard for us to embark on in the current budget environment to stripe it besides the, the public feedback. You know, Jim had talked to us about the parking plan and forcing it with the, the building permit process when someone's either building new or doing a substantial addition. And my, my take on it is that's fine. That's actually a pretty effective tool. We're kinda getting new builds. One thing that I do think should be just kind of like a little checkbox when you, when you guys are redoing the zoning code is specifically about driveways on corner lots. The code's kind of a little bit conflicted in terms of where it says there and distance from corners and whatnot. And it makes some corner lot configurations kind of difficult from a driveway perspective. So it's, it's candidly, it's not really anything controversial. I think it's more just a tweak to allow them to be kind of compliant with what the code says in terms of distance from corners and the required distance from route one and that type of thing. And those were the main issues. And then the only, the only other issue was out there, which is, you know, hugely controversial is, is parking in yards, but that's really separate from driveways. So from my perspective, I don't know that I would really even go there because I think it's a whole different issue than driveways.
All right. We'll, we'll take that on, we'll take it from here, David, and thank you for all your help on planning zoning. And great, good luck and thank you very much for being a town commissioner. So Rick, you're up on stormwater.
Thank you, Mike. The stormwater runoff with the resilient community partnership and the Sussex Conservation District and our building official. I talked to all three departments. There is new construction runoff. There is stormwater discharge into the bay. And I'm not really certain what I, what the parameter was, so I looked into all of it. And the Sussex Conservation District has requirements for the silt fencing, for the grade, for the houses to be draining water away from foundation, but there's not much that can be done require, requirement wise, to help a neighbor who has a lower piece of property. And there's nothing in the conservation plans. There is nothing with the resilient community partnership and it's sort of a neighborly thing. But fortunately, because Dewey Beach is mostly a, a sand dune, we have good perkability and, and our water, rainwater perks pretty quickly. The resilient community partnership is a, a three-year-old program that is, is pretty impressive. I had never heard of it before this. And the gal that's been running it is retiring on June 9th and moving to Dell Dot, which has given me all the links to the people to be in contact with. Basically their interest is in stormwater and stormwater rise and, or sea level rise and stormwater discharge. And they've already done a study with Dewey Beach. I think they were in league with the Reed Avenue flood mitigation and they have something in the works right now for Sunset Park. It's a grant that the town is supposed to match with, but they're not so much involved in what I was considering the stormwater problem being new construction and, and housing and storm drains. I did share with them the cotton engineering plan that was done in 2013, which shows every one of our stormwater outlets and where it is and the best management process of, of building green berms around our stormwater drains and having filtration and letting these drains go into wetland areas as opposed to raw stormwater into the bay. But it, there's a lot of organizations, there's a lot of grant money, there's a lot of professionals out there that are willing to help us, but we have to have a direction to go to them for the help.
Excellent. Well, that's, that's, that's great news on that. And thank you for the report there, Rick. Anybody?
We've got a lot of good contacts that, that can help us. We just have, have to have a direction for their help.
Okay. And let me think about that for the next, you know, for an action item, I, some, some type of report back to the town on that. Go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, and just maybe a little bit of clarification. When, when that group came in and presented to the commissioners, they talked about a whole range of strategies and part of what they were trying to do was to they could get some feedback on which of those strategies might be something that could be required by the town, perhaps as part of new construction. Or strategies that might be encouraged in some way, or there might be some way for the town to incentivize the use of certain strategies or just other strategies that, you know, people should be aware of that they might adopt that would promote better stormwater management. So it was kind of a, you know, a way of, not a hierarchy per se, but kind of a level of interest and maybe a, a level with which we might try to, you know, encourage as opposed to require people to, to adopt certain strategies. So, you know, if you can think about some of those individual strategies and think about it in that context, that, that might be helpful feedback as well.
That's very helpful. I, you know, trying to put together like what I was gonna report back. So I'll think about that, Gary. I'll take that under consideration. I might call you with a few questions and more. We'll get something to, to conclude that, that assignment. But right now it's still not, not concluded yet. We just wanted to discuss it today, see where, where we're going, what Rick found. And I'll get with Rick offline and see what we think we can craft up. Kelly might be able to help us from the conservation district to give us some recommendations as to what she would like the town to require in the permitting process. You know, what, what, what if any stormwater infiltration device might work, you know, before the runoff leaves that, the, the property? That would be a, a green best management practice type thing. Is that, is that kind of what you're thinking?
Yeah, yeah. And it's been a while since I looked at the presentation they left with us, but there were, you know, there's a whole series of strategies, some of which were just as simple as maybe a rain barrel or something like that. But, you know, just a way of improving stormwater management. These are strategies, I guess, that have been tried and tested and, you know, improved to be effective. But just a matter of how you either encourage or require people to use them.
And, and, and that's in line with, you know, Rick's, Rick, you know, we had some success out there on Bayard Avenue when him and I were on the infrastructure committee. And that's, that's worked decently. And, you know, we, we might be able to dust off something Mr. Cotton did or that the other engineers that had done, done the work on the grant money to care, to basically summarize all of our stormwater infrastructure into town. So there's some things that we have and let me see if I can put together a report on that, some type of memo or something. And we'll go from there. All right. So that's an action item. I got, got that right there. And as far as the last item, we talked about that. That's the neglected homes. And we will put that on the agenda as agenda item two for the next meeting. So we'll look at the, begin to look at the table two and we'll look at the ordinance. So I'll get with you Fred. You know, and, and, you know, pull up that ordinance that you already drafted and make sure that we post it properly. And I will send all the P and Z commissioners some emails trying to set the next meeting date to see what works for you guys. Unless you guys wanna try it now, I mean, you know, we could, I think the best thing to do is just go offline and, and look at dates like we've done before, if you're okay with that. Does that work or you guys wanna pick one now?
I'm here for the summer. I'm flexible.
All right. I'll send you guys an email offline. We'll pick a date.
I will say that six o'clock on Friday nights don't work for me.
Six o'clock on Friday don't work. Okay, yeah. So we will, we will definitely take that into consideration. Maybe we look at it off and off, well, if we're doing them online, we might have to do one more online in July, depending on what town hall tells us. So if we do one online, it doesn't really matter. You know, we could do it on Saturday. We won't be in the way of the lifeguards. See, the problem with Saturdays and Sundays now is we'd be in the way of the lifeguards. We could maybe do it earlier or do an evening during the week, something like that. But we'll figure it out offline. So looking for a planning commissioner's comments. I'll just go down the list. I'm at the top of the list, so I have no comments. Rick Judge, do you have any closing comments?
No real comments. I'd like to see the half story revisited, revisited at some point, but we can include that in, in a later discussion.
Okay. Jimmy?
Nope, I'm good.
Marty?
I might, I might just comment on the, the format of the meeting. I, I mean, obviously this works very well in our COVID-19 situation, but does, does this limit us to no action in, in a meeting or what are the parameters? In other words, we're inviting the, the public to, to listen to the, to the meeting. I don't know if we need to give them a forum to do that. In other words, open up the, the lifesaving station with a, with a video presentation or something, or what, what technically maybe Fred can talk about that. What? How do we, how does that satisfy the requirements?
Well, well, first of all, there's folks that are, that are dialed in, in a waiting room if they wanna talk, like Ken Lodge was, looked like he was there, but it looks like he's in now. But Ashley's got that. And if Ashley, if she has anybody who wanted to talk, she could let them in to talk. It's not a perfect situation, how it works, but that they, they, it is possible for them, I think, to comment. Is that not true? Ashley or Fred? And then Fred, I guess the question from Marty is, can we vote? Like if we have a public hearing, can we vote on an ordinance electronically? Cause we were thinking about doing that next month. And if it's a public meeting that we're going to public hearing that we're gonna vote on, we don't wanna vote on something where we're not supposed to be, is what you're saying, Marty, right?
Yeah, I just, yeah, some, some technical analysis of, of how we can handle this. Probably the state of Delaware is probably has these at the state level and has come to some satisfactorily agreeable standards or something. I'm not sure, but.
Yeah. I, I know in Maryland you can do it over, over, you know, meeting like this, but in Delaware, I'm not, I'm not sure. So go ahead Fred, you're, you're the man.
Okay. Well, the, the reason we're permitted to, to have a meeting, which is assembling a quorum of people of a governmental entity like this is because we're in a suspension of rules given the governor's state of emergency declaration. So one of the provisions was to specifically say that the Freedom of Information Act standards that require that meetings be held publicly for the public to attend have been suspended. So we, so once the state of emergencies lifted, we'll no longer be able to meet under these circumstances. However, while the state of emergency is in effect, we can take all the action that we could if we were meeting in person. So long as we meet their other requirements, which include allowing members of the general public to participate in these meetings. So I think Ashley was prepared to tell us that there are people who have been invited. Just the general public has been invited to observe the meeting and under the state of emergency must be allowed to comment at one point or another during the course of the meeting.
Yeah, good. No, I think, I think that, no, that's, I'm happy with that. It's just that I don't, I didn't know the details and I'm sure that, you know, that's been thought out, but I appreciate just the verbalization of that. And, and we look for the suspension of the rules and, you know, when that's, when that's no longer sus, when no, no longer suspended, the, the rules are no longer suspended. Then we've gotta make sure we get back to the traditional process. So anyway, good, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Marty. So with that being said, I think we're looking for a motion to adjourn and go from there. So anyone wanna make a motion? Well, first of all, before we make a motion to adjourn, does anyone else have any more comments? You know, planning zoning commissioners or not, I know it's a little bit out of order, but just because of this technology thing, just wanna make sure I didn't leave anybody out.
Does Mr. Lodge wanna speak? You know, given the conversation we just had, do we have any members of the public who want to participate or make a comment?
Yeah, can, can your, I think Ken, your speaker is on, is on mute as far as the symbols. There we go.
I, I was just, just listening. No comments. It's a good meeting. I like the format, actually.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lodge. All right, motion to adjourn.
A second.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, second, Jimmy. All right, thank you.